Call this meeting in order, please silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation by Councilmember Richmond.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; lead us into temptation, deliver us from evil. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium, state your name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited for five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. The council will not engage in the debate. On the first of July, you have three seconds left. Please ramp it up, because on the second of July, we have to stop.
Matthew Gray.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Matthew Gray, 41 Clinton Street. I'm here on behalf of to provide support for the bid director request for an open container for Jackson Square. I am one of the owners of Eli Fish, which backs into the square. We are one of the main users of the square. We provide two festivals per year. It is Carnival and Oktoberfest. But in addition to that, we are there, we witness a Friday night concert series that the Bid puts on, and then there's also the Rambles, and then starting last year, Italian Fest is the square also. The argument and the case for the open container, there's multiple different reasons why we would like to see that. Number one is when we provide alcohol in the square, we have to go for a state liquor authority permit. Per New York state law, we can only go for four, and that's total by anyone, for one location. And with Italian Fest, Carnival, Oktoberfest, and the Rambles, that's four. So we're out of licenses for that space. Number two is development. We know that the city is getting ready to put a large chunk of capital into the space, developing it with, let's say, concrete and steel, which is great, but what the space is missing is people. Right now, we're less than 14 days a year with this active programming in that square. And putting a great stage there and cleaning the square up is going to be fantastic, but I'm not sure that really pushes the needle to bring people into the space. If we were to have open container and then be able to, if people were to leave Eli Fish, which we're days away from completing our patio, and then go over to Craig's Center Street Smokehouse, it gets some cross-traffic going. Also, in the summer, it just opens up a lot of opportunities where, you know, if, I apologize. So, we do a Saturday concert, we do Saturday music inside. So, if there's ability to actually have more people in the square during the summer season, you know, there's an opportunity there for Center Street and Eli to partner and actually maybe co-sponsor the music on the stage, do a Saturday concert series. You know, as time has gone on, we went from municipal-backed programming for the city, and a lot of it was also done for the church, and through a conversation that we've had earlier, a lot of that has gone away. What has happened is that businesses and private promoters have had to step up and kind of fill in those gaps for, you know, things that are of a fun nature for the city. But that all comes with, it has to be profitable or break even for that to happen. The sale of alcohol is, by the way, something that usually becomes profitable for an event. All major events in western New York, you go down the list of all the big ones, they all have alcohol, and there's a reason for that. It brings people, it also brings people that spend money. The third one is future development of that site. We have seven other properties, if I count it correctly, that bought into that square that do not have current egress into the square. Well, if there are no people there, if people are coming to our business, they're coming to Center Street, there's no live entertainment happening on a more often duration, who's to say that, you know, the grassroots doesn't turn their entrance, you know, into the square now? You know, the warehouse building, the Cars Warehouse building, has been largely vacant for the last year on the first floor. What if that's an opportunity now to bring in, I don't know, a ciderade, a distillery, something of that nature? If you bring the people downtown, and that is our goal, more development happens on its own. So, it's great that we're doing this work to Jackson Square, but I really think that having an open container will kind of push us to the next stage as far as getting more traffic to the downtown area. Thank you.
Mary Jo Whitman.
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Whitman, 280 Eighth Street in Batavia. I am the Director of Education for GORR, as well as statewide community program coordinator for the organization. Obviously, we are involved in Rambles, and we also fund, provide funding for a lot of the events that happen in Jackson Square. Most of what I'm going to say is, it's going to echo what Matthew just said, is that, you know, we, bringing open container and allowing the alcohol within the square really is going to drive, I don't know, people to come to the square and enjoy these events. We have the concert series that happens there that we fund, but the part that we want to see is that this is as successful as possible. Second, that the open container, two open containers in relation to Jackson Square is really beneficial to, I don't really mean people, but many different demographics of people that will increase, you know, patronage to the different businesses. If you have the GORR, maybe we'll also go to support.
James Simons.
Good evening, Council. I was here two weeks ago to address my concerns for the city. I have an agreement with Mr. Gray, man from GORR, that the open container policy should happen for Jackson Square, and I'd like to talk about my relationship with alcohol, personal and present. Currently, I'm a collector, a recycler. I've issued my concerns about recycling in our neighborhoods. I've walked my neighborhood, District Two, and I've walked the surrounding areas in our city. What I see is a lot of empty containers, whether that be glass bottles, beer bottles broken along railroad tracks, or throughout the city. It's ultimately a person's responsibility on how they discard their alcohol beverages. With the open policy rule, you contain that to just the square. Now, people will sneak alcohol out because we're not 24/7 security, but with that control and the limit into the square, I think it's a good idea to have open policy, open container policy, because older individuals as well as younger individuals above the age of 21 will be able to have a few beverages, relax, and enjoy the environment. I personally walked through there many times, I know the Ivy, I know Center Street Smokehouse, which is unfortunately open on weekends now. COVID killed a lot of small businesses in Batavia, and what you can emulate is the Harvester Center. I recently learned about Joe Man Cuso and Joseph Elliott and their history to Batavia as we at Harvester have and Ellicott have. Those are my inspirations, those are great ideas, and ultimately, Joe Man Cuso has a statue in China that some of you may or may not know about. So, I support the open container policy, and I'd like to see more recycling, volunteers from the youth as well as adults. I think we could really use the youth in our city to get out and clean up the area and do the work that older gentlemen like myself and the council can't typically do. I think we should do that as a good volunteer option, and it would be something that they can put on their resume as an experience of volunteering for their city and for the Parking and Recycling Committee through the Police Department, as well as local district councilmen who organize such an event. I'm unfamiliar with how the city is run, and this is only my second meeting, but I am willing to work with like-minded individuals on coming up with a plan to recycle and make our neighborhoods look and feel safe. Thank you.
Patricia Marshall.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Marshall. I reside in Lancaster, New York. My husband and I owned a little home years ago in Lancaster. I'm also the president, president of the Lancaster Merchant Association, so the local business group. We had looked into revising our open container codes within the village a few years ago, and in our research, we have done, we had looked at other municipalities that have revised their open container policy. We also researched and engaged the police department. So, we reached out to our local police department in addition to East Aurora. I don't know if you guys are familiar with East Aurora, but they never had an open container law on the books ever. So, they are most familiar with how events occur when there is no open container restrictions. We reached out to them and asked them if they had noticed any increased incidences during events where and which open container is allowed. And they reported that they do not see incidences increase because of the recent, or the change of the open container. We reached out to our local police department because we have been conducting civic shops throughout the village and were concerned that maybe we maybe kicked up some dust, asked them if they saw any incidences, any increase in, you know, violations, and they said they did not. And in talking to them, they were in full support of removing or rescinding the open container law. The other concern that I already had was about garbage. This gentleman had also previously talked about garbage. We did talk to the mayor of East Aurora and asked them if there was an issue with garbage, and he said, no, they do engage with the DPW, and while there are events that do lead to increased garbage, there is control of it. So, it did not turn out to be an issue. We also did research into other municipalities, and you will find that Saratoga Springs in New York, Oswego, Angola, Lancaster are the ones that have recently rescinded their open container, and I would definitely encourage you moving forward with it. It's an opportunity to increase the tasting room square footage for those that are alcohol providers. It also is a draw for the public to come and enjoy events within your area. Thank you.
Any responses?
I have to agree with Mr. Gray that I think it would create jobs or create businesses down there, so I'm full support of the open container in Jackson Square.
My concern is people using that as a public space to bring their own alcohol, get out of the eye of the public, and hang out in there when there isn't a function going on at the restaurants that connect to it. So, I'm in favor of it, but I would like to see possibly signage, warning people if they leave that area that they're going to be in violation. And obviously, if no one is responsible for it, but yet they use it, who's going to be cleaning it up? I mean, I'm sure it's inevitable, there'll be bottles or glasses or plastic cups being strewn around in there. I know a lot of businesses clean up around their own business anyway, so I would, you know, hopefully, they would keep it clean on their own and notify if somebody was just in there having a private party without any authorization and using the space for a hangout and a drinking location. I mean, that's not what you're talking about here. You're talking about promoting business, promoting activity in there, and maybe, you know, having freedom to go from one establishment to another. That's all great, I love all that. But my prior life has taught me that not everyone obeys the unwritten rules, so to speak, so you almost have to have some kind of guidelines to make sure that it stays clean, doesn't turn into a hangout, and that people know if they're walking out with a beverage and they walk onto Jackson Street, they know when they walk through the alley that they're leaving the space, and that they probably should either dispose of their beverage or, you know, finish it up.
I agree with you, Mr. President, but I think we can provide this but still stay within the confines of our law without repealing the law and overthrowing it. In our paragraph 37, four, it says special permission. It shall apply in the event of a fair, a picnic, or a community gathering versus a blanket, okay, you can walk around, drink beer, anytime you walk down X, Y, Z street, which is really, then it's totally out of our control. And, you know, I commend Mr. Gray and people for putting all this money into their buildings and all the rest of it. They have a lot of faith in the community, and every time they put a dollar in, there goes their assessment too, so we do get some revenue. But I think there's ways we can do this, and we're going to be discussing it later in the meeting anyway, so anything to improve business is a good thing.
Right. I think it's ultimately, we're going to have to do some research like other places have done, and talk to our police and DPW, and see how they feel about it, and see what ideas they have to contain it to that area. And like you said, I don't think it's necessary to repeal the open container in the whole city at this point, but definitely, I like the idea of that square becoming a more multi-use space for the businesses that use it there and any private gathering or whatever, but as long as it's approved, instead of just, we're starting to get calls because people realize that's an outdoor place that you can use at four in the morning and drink alcohol, and that's not really what it was intended for, so. That's my only concern, is to make sure it's contained.
And it does get a little more complicated, because two weeks ago, we had a horse-drawn wagon, pub crawl type thing going up and down the streets, residential areas, they don't sell the alcohol, people bring their own alcohol, and then they stop at a bar, and that was totally illegal because it violated our open container law, you know, riding down a city street. But I did speak with someone at the ABC Board today, and they said, we're fortunate that we do have a open container law, because then we can control what we want, where we want, and what time, versus communities that have never had it. And if it just hits their communities, then problems will expand too, so.
And I think they have a presentation on that pedal bike thing that you were talking about.
Well, this was a horse-drawn, a two, two draft horses, and went by the house, everybody playing music, waving, and I said, boy, you know.
I don't know, as long as they're on the vehicle, I don't think that applies, just like a limousine driving through town.
I don't think our law states you can do it, though.
I don't know. It's something, like I said, we have to cover up.
I was just going to suggest that we involve the Chief of Police on this as well.
Yeah, for sure, but we, like Bob said, it's on the list that we discussed. Just we're kind of answering some questions that were brought up right here at the thing, but you're right, I mean, we're going to get into a full-blown discussion on it later as a meeting, so.
I also support Mr. Gray's request.
Very much, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else, anything else? Okay, communications?
The Cornerstone Church submitted their application for a community outreach picnic on Saturday, May 27th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This would be in Austin Park.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, next one.
Just King submitted their application for Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June 17th, at 12:00 p.m. in Williams Park.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, next one.
And the last one is Bid submitted their application for the Italian Fest on Saturday, July 29th, on Center School and Jackson Streets and Jackson Square. This would be from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Any questions or concerns?
That was nice last year.
Okay. The next city council meeting will be held Monday, June 12th, 7:00 p.m. at City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, city center, and I have a proclamation. Who am I going to be, are you going to give this to the police department? Do you just want me to read this?
Yeah, if you want to read it, that's great.
Okay. I will stand and read it, uh, respect. Whereas the officers of the City of Batavia Police Department are committed to the preservation of life and property, risking their lives to provide protection, law and order, and serving the cause of justice, and whereas the officers of the City of Batavia Police Department accept a profound responsibility and work to uphold our laws, safeguard our rights and freedoms, and serve on the front lines in the fight against crime in an effort to keep our neighborhoods safe, and whereas many of the officers dedicated several years serving the residents of the City of Batavia, most serving longer than 20 years, their service to the city meant time away from their families and loved ones in order to protect the community that they took and to safeguard. And whereas each year, the City of Batavia will recognize the dedicated and brave police officers who have been laid to rest since retiring from the police department by placing memorial flags at each officer's graveside in remembrance of their service to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, City Council President, and retired police lieutenant Eugene Jankowski Jr., on behalf of the City Council of the City of Batavia, who hereby make this proclamation to honor our departed police officers who have retired from the City of Batavia Police Department, who, by their loyal and selfless devotion to their duties, have rendered dedicated service to our community, and declare May 31st, 2023, as the City of Batavia Police Department Flag Commemoration Day. Thank you for all your support. And we have two presentations. Yes, Councilperson Jankowski, members of council, we have two presentations tonight. Excuse me, the first is our friends from Habitat for Humanity, here to give us just an example of what they've been up to over the past year or so. We have Ariel McVeigh and Jaleen Smith-Kilner. As well as a special guest. There will be a video.
Good evening, City Council. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for.
Yep.
All right, screen.
Get my large head out of the way.
So, thank you for allowing us to be here to speak with you and show us a little presentation. My name is Ariel McVeigh, I'm the board president for Habitat for Humanity. This is Jaleen Kilner and Terry. Jaleen is our executive director of board, Habitat for Tennessee County, and Terry is our most recent homeowner. So, I just wanted to first tell you that we have successfully completed our 26th home, which is Terry's home, and out of those 26 homes, the city has been gracious enough to donate, more or less, several of those homes as well, which you'll see in the presentation. Those 26 homes have been really successful for us. We've had one foreclosure in all of these years, and with that foreclosure, we were able to stick another Habitat family in there. So, with that said, these families have been able to provide to the community, and they've been able to provide to the city. We'd like to ask that the city council would consider Habitat for further donations instead of possibly considering putting them on the auction list, because then with that, we have permanent families that will stay, they'll be a part of the community and be able to be within the City of Batavia instead of it being rented out to several different families throughout the years. So, with that said, I just wanted to show a presentation that was put together for us, just to explain a little bit more about the City of Batavia and the homes that were donated to us and what we've done with them. So, as you saw, 50 Oak Street is the last home that we've just closed on. We did bring a special guest with us, Terry. He is our newest homeowner, and he's got such an incredible story too, so we just brought him here in order to share that a little bit, just a little bit about his experience with Habitat and his overall homeownership.
How you doing, everybody? I'll start, I got into the program, like, just going by the restore, and I ran into Jaleen, and then I told her what, like, what I was going through with my kids. Their mom was doing other things, so I had to take them, but I had nowhere to take them, so they were, they stayed with their grandparents for a while, and then they ended up coming to me, and they were living there on Pearl Street for probably like four or five years. And in that time, I had to do all kinds of things to get in position to own the home, so I had to get my credit and all the other stuff right. So, all that stuff came, and then I was blessed with this home, which I'm grateful for, and my kids, they, they can't believe it, so that's what I'm grateful for, bracing for my kids, so that's about it, that they got a chance to have a home, not even now, but down the line. So, I appreciate Habitat for everybody, everything they did and everybody else involved. I appreciate it.
This is Ariel Sugg. My name is Jaleen Smith-Kilner, and I have the privilege of being the executive doctor for Habitat for Humanity in Tennessee County. And every time we go through Terry's story, it just like tugs on your heart, and so Terry and all of our Habitat homeowners are an inspiration. So, Rachel, Eric, your leadership team, city council, we thank you for allowing us to come tonight and showcase our mission, and we look forward to working together to build and to collaborate and to make the City of Batavia more houses available for those that are so deserving of it. Thank you.
Members of council, our second presentation tonight is a young entrepreneur in the city, Kyler Preston, who would like to discuss Batavia Pedal Party LLC.
Hi, Council. My name is Kyler Preston, and I'm the owner and proprietor of Batavia Pedal Party. Batavia Pedal Party LLC is kind of like the pedal bike tour that we were discussing before, where people can pay, they ride the bike around town, and they can visit bars, go for birthday party tours, go for bachelorette parties, perfect for corporate outings, and just team bonding overall. Now, why am I here? I'm here to ask city council to amend, to consider amending the city charter to allow the riders themselves to bring two of their own canned alcoholic beverages per person to be consumed while riding the bike. to be consumed while riding the bike. This is our brand new bike. The bike is actually currently being made right now. It's being made in Texas. It can hold 16 people plus the driver. 10 of the people will be pedaling, and then four of them will reside on the bench, and then two on the seats that do not pedal. The bike actually includes LED lights and a Bluetooth speaker system. We really try to incorporate fun, as we're the designated drivers, we want people to enjoy their time riding the bike. That being said, we still have a bunch of safety features, including seat belts, backrest bike helmets. Bike helmets are optional for people under 14, or not optional. Obviously, the bike is also DOT approved. It comes with an electric motor, speedometer, odometer, turning signals, brake lights, headlights, and a horn. This is my timeline of how I got here today. I jumped through a bunch of different hoops to try to get here and try to figure out if this business was actually feasible. My first step was going to the Department of Motor Vehicle. They didn't know exactly, they didn't know much about this, so they sent me to the DOT. From there, the DOT sent me to the county clerk's office, where they, once again, kind of got stuck in this gray area. At that point, I got fed up, and I went right to the city manager's office. Rachel was actually out of the office that week on vacation, so I went and visited Eric.
Good job, Eric.
Thank you. Once we did some more digging, we found out that this is 100% completely legal. There's businesses in Buffalo, Rochester, and Syracuse that all do this and actually allow two alcoholic beverages on per rider. And at that point, I then visited Raleigh, North Carolina, to visit the CEO of the biggest company that manufactures these bikes and owns the biggest company in the area or in the market. From this point, we actually designed and ordered our own custom bike, which it's going to take about another month to be made, but we're in the process. We have it ordered and matching the color scheme. At that point, we actually created the LLC. I had to do some digging and find out how to insure this thing. The CEO that I talked about earlier, he gave me the number of specialty insurance company that will ensure this. And now, all I have left to do is ask City Council to consider an amendment, launch my website, join the Chamber of Commerce, receive the bike, and then collaborate with other local businesses, and then we can pedal around Batavia. Now, the pricing and advertising. The price of a two-hour ride is $30 per person, and there's a minimum of 10 people per booking and a maximum of 16 people. We will have days that make smaller groups so that we can achieve the number of 10 riders easier. As far as advertising goes, I think the bike will advertise itself. And I'm currently in the process of creating social media accounts and a website. Our hours of operation. We will ride the bike as much as we can. Like I said, there's two-hour tours, so these are kind of the time slots that I was thinking about, but these are also all subject to change, and the exemptions will be due to bad weather. The bike will be stored at 310 East Main Street. We're currently in the process of trying to get the garage built, but there's also plenty of ample parking. There's also the church right across the street and parking on front. This is one of the routes that we've considered. Once again, everything is still a little bit subject to change as we're trying to figure out how this goes so we can make the smoothest ride possible. The star is the start point. The arrows kind of show the direction. And then all the red points are actually restaurants and bars. Now you're thinking, how will we handle difficult riders? Everything is included in the waiver, which you guys have been given. We will strictly prohibit arriving to the ride intoxicated and unwilling to follow the safety rules. If you don't sign our waiver, you're obviously not going to be able to come on a ride with us. And our drivers have all the power, is they can return to the ride at any time, return to the start of the ride at any time. Now, how have other cities responded? There's been a huge upbringing of this, of this market all throughout the U.S. They kind of pop up everywhere, every big city. Nashville's super popular for them. They're in Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse, like I said earlier. And I know that they have approval for two canned alcoholic beverages. So finally, once again, I'm asking you to please consider amending the city charter to allow riders to bring two of their own canned alcoholic beverages to be consumed while on the Batavia Pedal Party bike in order for us to remain consistent with the Western New York Pedal Tour bike businesses. Thank you so much for listening to me. Do I have any questions?
Sounds good. I have a question. If you have, let's say, a couple individuals that are paralyzed, does that affect the other drivers to control the bike?
Paralyzed.
Like if they're intoxicated?
Oh, yeah. Well, it doesn't actually...
You're over going, everyone's in sync. How many, so all three people are parked, will they still walk to the right hand?
No, like I said, it's actually motorized, so I can flick on the motor at any time. It's got cruise control, so I can keep it at, let's say, accident amount of speed. The pedals walk about the same pace. That's one of the safety precautions. We've made sure that we had one that does have a motor. The ones in Buffalo, Rochester, I believe they don't actually include motors, although they claim they do. This is one of the safety precautions that we made sure that we wanted to have so that, for that reason. Granted, it is only a two-hour tour, so we're trying to prevent severe intoxication.
You're not going to be intoxicated according to this...
Yeah, yeah, no.
Well, it's bad for you too. If you're intoxicated, that ruins it for everybody. I like the idea of the scene gestures. Is my question for you, Mr. Preston? In your presentation, you said at any point, they can return to the starting point. I was unclear on that. Are you going to have a vehicle pick up the intoxicated person or assisted by the police? Or what's your plan?
If somebody's really unruly, we'll just return right back to the start by the same way of the pedal bike.
Ending the whole tour?
Yes.
Okay. Kyler, typically, what group of people would be utilizing this service? Typically, a pre-existing party, like people that rent limousines? Or will they be more individuals that just do not know each other, that just happen to rent the space for that time period?
I would say large groups, two small groups. Individuals might be, they might feel a little bit of pressure not knowing anybody, and they might not want to book. But we will hold, it's called mixers, where a bunch of different small groups can accumulate together in order to reach a larger group that's able to power the bike.
You said each person can bring two alcoholic beverages, but can one person drink four or five or six? How do you control that each person can only drink the beverages they bring?
That is hard to, it's hard to really control. I'll do my best, but at the end of the day, if somebody really wants to do something like that, that breaks the waiver and breaks the policy, they're going to do it anyways.
If you have to drink a beverage you bring, can I, like if I don't drink, and I go to this person here, can I say, "Here, you can have my two beers too"?
It's actually worded so that every person gets two beverages of their own. I understand what you're saying.
So you're basically, you're basically on intoxication though, right? So someone somehow suddenly gets really intoxicated and they order two beverages, as long as they're not incapacitated and acting unruly, I mean, I don't see a problem there, even though you're not supposed to do that, I mean, like you said. But if it's obvious they drank a lot more, it would be apparent. In two hours, if you drink four or five beverages, I think it would show, and then you would have to, your driver would have to make adjustments accordingly, I would think. And it makes sense. I guess my concern is, I just don't want loud music screaming going down a quiet neighborhood at 10 o'clock at night, and someone looking out their window going, "What the heck is that thing?". And then, but if they're going by, everybody's, you know, okay, I don't think there'd be a problem. Loud music, swearing, cursing, whatever, that would attract a negative intention. I think that would, then you start getting complaints from neighborhoods of them coming by all the time, right? Making the...
In the waiver, it says that includes foul language, so that's also dependent on music choice.
So, yeah, right, good point, because there might be some music that is...
Vulgar, yeah.
So, I like the idea, I like the concept. I think we're just going to have to talk to our legal and see how we would amend, or do we have to amend anything to allow two beverages per person? I don't know how we police that. Eric, have you looked into that?
So, Councilperson, or Council President Jankowski, what we're actually asking for, and you'll see in the resolution tonight, is for granted special permission per the charter, just like it's paid for any other event or anything that would be requesting that.
So it'd be a period of, a window of opportunity from this date to that date, obviously, you know, you're not going to go and follow that...
No, only to this, only to this business specifically.
That's what I mean. So you would be basically almost doing like an event application for a period of two or three months of the summer, or whatever it is, and start and stop date, and then any of your tours you do in the middle of all that would be covered on that one event, right?
It's not an event application, it's actually Charter Section 37-4, the Batavia Municipal code, sorry, code section, that the Batavia Pedal Party LLC is hereby granted special permission to allow open containers related to Batavia Pedal Party LLC activities on designated city streets, sidewalks, and city-owned public areas under the approved event application, subject only to paramount authority and direction of the city manager, police, fire, and any other emergency personnel. So you'd be granting the waiver to allow the special permission for the two containers per person of alcohol. The business, from what I understand, can be up and running right now, at any point within our city limits, without any other permissions. We don't have business licensing. What this is, is the special permission to allow the two alcoholic beverages per person.
And then per the waiver, which I understand you just received, it's conditioned on being on the actual vehicle?
Right, right, right. So that was what I was going to ask you. Do we even need a waiver if they're on the vehicle and they're not on a city street? It's no different than when you see, you know, a limo driver, and there's a wedding party, and they're all drinking champagne in the back, but it's, obviously, the driver is in a different area of the passengers, and therefore higher, obviously, and they're driving on a city street. How is that, I mean, that doesn't require a special permission, right?
It's not exactly in a closed vehicle. I mean, this is basically something that would be inconsistent with the city open container law. Right now, there's a prohibition in the open container law, Section 37, except as permitted. And the request was made to consider a special permission for that.
So you think there's one that needs to be a special permission? It's not, it's not allowed, it's not, it's not in violation, but you want a special permission anyway just to come?
Now, I refer to Chief Fibeus in terms of the VTL aspects of that, because it's his area's expertise, but I would say generally, it's not contained inside the cockpit of a vehicle.
Right.
It's visible to the community, it's outside the vehicle, more or less, it's an open air vehicle. So I would submit that probably the open container law applies unless accepted by Council.
Great.
And I agree with George, it's going to be in public, and it's going to be on a vehicle that is not a registered or licensed vehicle, can't be registered or licensed in New York State. So the fact that it is on a public highway, the open container law would apply.
I mean, it's like if you're on a bicycle, there could be a violation.
That's right.
And it also, I think, gives us a little more control over your driver, because you can say, "Look, if I'm going to get in trouble and I'm going to lose my permission, if we don't resolve this now quietly, otherwise the city will, we start getting complaints, we're going to have to reevaluate the permission thing, right?"
I have another question. What's going to be your policy on smoking? With the legalization of cannabis, I mean, some people may not want people stopping in front of their house and everybody taking a break and smoking.
Just to interrupt that for a minute, I think we discussed this before, wherever you can smoke a cigarette, cannabis is allowed, and that means walking right down the street.
I just asked what the policy writing this is going to be.
Right, I just want to let you, I don't think, I don't know if you knew, just want to let you know, anywhere you smoke, cigarette is legal, and you've forgotten restaurants, obviously. But I'm just telling you that's it, so I don't know what your policy's going to be, but maybe, you know, it's something you got to consider.
Yeah, that's definitely something I'll have to consider and reevaluate on.
What kind of liability are you carrying?
Specialty insurance, it's out of a firm in Florida. They handle all the ones in the U.S. pretty much. Like I said, I got it from the guy who actually manufactures these pedal bikes, who owns the biggest pedal bike company in the nation. He told me right from the get-go that there should be no problem with getting this passed in New York. He has helped me a lot throughout the way, as Eric has, and everybody else.
You're more concerned about the dollar?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm point question, I'm kind of a father. It's a million, $2 million policy, and it's standard for all these, for these pedal bikes.
They include the alcohol component?
Yeah. Now, there are other, there are other bikes that also, you can serve alcohol. We're not just conserving alcohol, you don't want, you don't want...
Bring your own and your own.
Bring your own, and they're not... Also, some other, we were talking about intoxication, there are only 10 peddlers, okay? There's six people on each side, so once you go over the wheelbarrow stationary, there's no pedal, possibly seating in the back. So if somebody does feel a little bit tipsy, they don't have to, they lock their seatbelt, sit in the back then.
Sure, right.
Right, so we're not looking to knock people off. We also went with a new bike because of the backrest and also the seatbelts. If you look, correct, you look at some of these other bikes, even the Japanese bikes, they're a lot cheaper, but they're built from China, and they're in a cargo bin, and to get them in those cargo bins, your wheelbase is less than like six feet, and those are the ones that have tipped. This is eight-foot wheelbase, and made in the United States, and it's solid, sturdy.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I give you credit for starting your first business at such a young age, and thank you for investing in Batavia. We'll have to, you know, look it up and give it, you know, make sure the legal and everything, and we're going to discuss it, obviously, tonight, and we'll see a resolution tonight.
Yep.
If we won't vote on it tonight, but we'll discuss it, if it gets moved to a business meeting, then, you know, it'll be okay. Any other questions for...
Yeah, sounds good.
I would just like to say thank you again. I really just want to remain consistent with the Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse competition, and just compete how other new companies...
Very great. It's a cool idea.
Yes, yes.
Good job, guys. Okay, discussion of block parties.
I brought this forward because of some concerns about a block party. Last year, I received a letter, which I gave to the clerk for her records, and then I did receive an email today stating also for other persons, it's a similar experience. So I asked Rachel to look into it, and, well, South Swan Street Block Party, what permits were issued and was closing the street authorized? That was question number one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
I, did you ask what permits were issued?
Right, and was it authorized to close the street?
Yes, I believe so. Let me open my email, I don't have the application in front of me.
Should it...
Do you have a copy in front of, I thought we handed them out.
A copy of Bob's concerns and the...
Let me grant, I have the application right here. So there's two block parties held last year that we found in our records. One was on Fordham Drive and one was on Swan Street. The one on Swan Street, which I believe you do...
The one on Swan Street, which I believe you do have the copy, the application in front of you, had vendors' music, DJ bands, face painting, t-shirts, sales basket raffles, and food vendors, um, there was alcohol at the event, they did not provide it, I believe this was the event where the Polish Falcons were involved, providing alcohol on their grounds, under their liquor license, and there was street closure, um.
About four barricades.
Oh, pager, yeah. Okay, so the streets and cross streets that will be affected were South Swan, Sumner Street, barricades were provided from the city, as well as they requested traffic cones, but it looks like under our departmental review, barricades were dropped off to close down the street for the event, so that is the application in reference.
Okay, and, and, you, I don't know if you know, were there health permits, did they have to get health permits for commercial sale of food?
Um, I believe you do, but I don't know, and Heidi, you can help me out maybe with this question, we don't monitor that, it would be the Genesee County Department of Health who would monitor health permits.
And was there some type of liability insurance provided? Good, all right, well, here are some of the problems, both lanes of traffic were blocked, and some of the residents couldn't leave their homes, people were, uh, prevented from traveling, this is an established route, it's a main thoroughfare, basically, I mean, it's a lot of traffic, and on a Saturday evening with church services, people were turned back to find an alternate route to go to church, so that was one of the problems. Many residents were not even notified about the event, and they had no input. All right, yeah, one resident stated that a barbecue trailer blocked the fire hydrant from eleven thirty in the morning to eleven thirty at night, and was parked right near her house, so she had to basically close up all her house to keep the smoke out, because this person's elderly has breathing problems. Uh, resident stated the driveway was blocked throughout the day by parked vehicles that were left unattended, they just parked and blocked the driveways. In one particular case, attendees went up to the resident's front porch and sat in her locker without permission, and she also stood on her front sidewalk without her permission, and she was afraid to say anything. And, uh, this other resident, there was a commercial sound trailer, large speakers, blasting away loud music through the entire event, and that was in front of her house, so, I, I like to see block parties, but I think some streets are very difficult or impossible to do it on when you close the whole street, and that type of party may be better off in a nearby park, so I assure the people we discuss it, and council would be aware of it, and, that's it.
Any other questions or concerns? Rachel, did you make any policy? We, we talked about this last year, right after the event happened, and I was under the impression we made policy to require at least notification of people who were gonna be affected, and that would be on the venue or on the applicant to do that, whichever block party it may be, on whatever street it's on, even if it's on a dead end, people should be notified what's going on, and, um, that local traffic would still be allowed to go to and from their houses at some point. Maybe you can close the through traffic, but if you live there and you're trying to get in and out of your driveway, you shouldn't be prevented from doing that, uh, obviously safely, because you're gonna have people walking around, but, um, you know, slow local traffic to get to and from a driveway is what we were talking about last year, and then we haven't had a block party since then, and we, I don't think we have any applications yet this year, but it's something to prepare for, so when we do get one, we, we can make sure they're in compliance.
So.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to know, I mean, looking at this barbecue trailer, this sounded like it was more than just some little block party.
It was.
That's what I'm saying, it's just like, this isn't like the normal block party that you have, I think there's gotta be some restrictions, my God.
Um, if you look on page four of the application, it notes some of those specifics about fire hydrants, cross streets, alleys, storefronts shall not be blocked by any vehicle or concession at any time. Um, we ask for applicants to be as specific as possible in the description, so we have a better understanding of the event. Uh, emergency vehicle safety lane must be maintained at all times, uh, talks about deep fryers, and how they must have fire extinguishers, we do safety inspections, chief, is that correct, with the fire department, with all applications? Um, city ordinances shall be complied with at all times, so therefore, with the noise ordinance at ten, should have been complied with at ten PM, um, we don't allow paint or markings on street surfaces, it does not specifically talk about notifying affected neighbors or not blocking driveway access, it's, it's kind of implied, so if we were to make a modification in this section, we could easily add, um, for block parties, organizers or street parties must inform neighbors of the event.
I also think.
And ensure local traffic can always move freely.
Rachel and I discussed some of this earlier, but I also think, uh, if it's a block party of this magnitude.
Yeah.
Uh, police officers should be periodically walking the streets, I mean, to have somebody come up and sit on your front porch without even having your permission, sitting there drinking and eating and yelling and.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the block party's problem, that's an individual who decided to walk on somebody's property.
Right.
That's.
Right, but, you know, the resident.
I mean, people, I mean, block parties, I've traditionally had food, and barbecue, and cooking, and everything, so, I mean, I, I don't see the difference, I just think as long as people can get access, and as long as local traffic has access, and they're notified as to what's going on during that notification process, that's where they should be told, we're planning to put a barbecue grill right in front of my house, which is next to your house, and that's when I would hope the person would say, you know, I have an asthma problem, can you put it somewhere else? I mean, that's why we want the neighbors to be notified, so, um, I don't wanna discourage block parties, I think they're great, I think neighborhoods need to get together, in the absence of church, um, carnivals and things that have since gone away, for whatever reason, I think people wanna get together, I think we should encourage it.
It just didn't sound like it was just, like someone just having like this little grill, and they were doing some protein, I mean, it sounded like it was something.
Yeah, this was a big block party, no more, but I think, you know.
There were tents set up, apparently, there was a lot of activity, but I think, too, you have to, you know, respect people's rights, and you can't block in their driveways and all this sort of thing, and I think some streets you just can't do it on. You know, I, for years, they used to have my Kingsbury, which is not a main thoroughfare, and it was a nice event, you know, it was mainly an afternoon event, they had games for the children, and the whole neigh, it was that neighborhood, it wasn't commercial businesses, and, you know, smoker trailers and all that sort of thing, so, uh, but in any event, uh, it's whatever our rules are, and that's what we have to comply with, and.
I know the woman, and I won't mention her name, because she was intimidated by these people, they were on her porch, they refused to move, go back in the house, they were pretty rude with her, they scared her. You have a potential, when you have a block party of this magnitude, that people are gonna call other people, hey, come on down, so, we don't even know if those people lived in the neighborhood that was causing the problems. I like to think our residents are better than that, like, we give them control of outsiders coming in.
I mean, it ought to be it from me to be a party pooper, but if somebody's trespassing on your property, that should be a police issue, and the police should have been called, and if music coming out of a speaker is fifty-five decibels or more, the police should be going there and asking them to turn it down, because that's code in the city of Batavia, that is code, fifty-five decibels, and that is probably how high I'm speaking right now.
How is that applied for an event application now? I thought when you make an application, you're asking for special permission to do things out of the ordinary that you normally wouldn't do, like close the street down, have some music, cook some food, invite the neighbors out, that's not something that normally happens, and if it was, we wouldn't need an event application for, so, I don't know if the.
Yeah, you still have to meet sections of code, I was reading.
Does any code section still apply, Council President?
So, so we have a beer tech for BeerTavia, and there is loud music, and someone in Washington having a complaint, that's technically violation, even though they have a permit to do that?
If it's investigated and determined to be in excess of the noise ordinance, yes.
I mean, I think the main thing is, is you have to hope people don't complain, but if they do, I, I don't think you're gonna break the law just because we gave them permission to have an event, because we really aren't giving permission, right?
I, I've just seen people from four blocks away, one call, shut down a party of a hundred people at a graduation party, that happens once every X amount of years when someone graduates in their family, and I, you know, personally, we waited for a few more calls before we went down there, because obviously they're having a once in a rare occasion party.
Oh, I, I agree, you're not fair.
You know, so, we gotta have a little courtesy, you know, if it's every Friday night, I did that, you're, excuse me, but you're not allowed to participate at this point, so, you know, that's, that's just where I'm at on it, I like the idea, um, and I think we should encourage it, but I also think we can adjust the rules a little bit to try to maybe address this incident, um, maybe have something in there about block party section, and say, are you gonna be having outside vendors catered, whatever, and then, you know, that checks a box, and then that brings our attention to it, like, how many of these are you gonna have, and it's a small street, how can you fit all that in there without closing the street down? Also, um, you have, the, the notification comes in handy to make sure people aren't surprised and caught off guard, um, and if they're not, they don't wanna participate, then that's fine, but they should be able to come and go to their house safely, um, so, maybe we would prevent anything from being set up in the middle of the street, you know, you can't put a barbecue tent in the middle of the street and block the street, ambulance may have to get through there, and so on and so forth, so, we can set it up and maybe have a block party section for parameters, and between the chief, and the fire chief, and the city management, I think they know what we're looking for, right? I mean, you could kind of maybe put some controls on it so that it's, they can safely have it, without causing too much of a disruption for.
Section one twenty-four of the City Municipal Code regarding noise exempts fairs, exhibitions, prays, or community celebrations that have come before this body from the noise ordinance?
That's what I thought.
Specifically, relevant permission was obtained from the city for those events, it exempts them from that fifty-five decibel level.
Because they're getting a special event permission that we've approved.
Correct.
Through the channels and the department heads and whatever, now we're asking for a little, um, notification, so people know, on this date, there's gonna be cooking, there's gonna be music, there's gonna be gathering, and you're still gonna be able, and they should know their rights, that they can get in and out of their driveway, not gonna affect you, we're gonna let you, the street's gonna be open to local traffic only, but we're gonna have a gathering here.
Does a loud music have to end at eleven?
Yeah, I think that would be.
That's up to the noise ordinance, if you approve the application.
So, then, for a block party, you definitely approve the, again, you got a section, music has to stop, obviously, at a time, and you know, you can't go till two, three in the morning, I mean, we have to be reasonable about it, because obviously, a lot of people, including myself, at one time work of the weekends, and you have to get up early, so not everybody is off on the weekends.
Yes.
And some people work midnight shift, so, you have to be, that's why the notification, I think, is important.
How do you handle the notification?
That's up to the, that's up to the application.
They come in and say, okay, I notified the whole neighborhood, and they didn't, they notified the front, and everybody had this great idea, and this, in this particular case, the people weren't all noted.
No, right, exactly.
They didn't have an opportunity for input either.
But that, that wasn't a requirement, that, to be notified, I don't believe, it wasn't a requirement, it was a courtesy, so, we learned some things, um, but again, that's on the application, if they apply, and they do that, and they, and they ignore the policy, then we know that, we make a strike on that, and the next time somebody wants to have a block party on that street, we just say, no, I'm sorry, we can't approve it, because there you, we get back, we have this little paper here, and the police department puts on there, we had thirteen calls for loud noise at the last party there, I, I don't recommend it, and then we just say, we can't prevent them from gathering, but we can, we can avoid the permission of loud music and the exemptions for all the other things that we allow on our street, the open container law and all that, but if they wanna gather and just chant on the front lawn of somebody's house, we can't stop them from doing that.
Right. Can we, can we restrict the permit process to homeowners of that street, or the landlord of that street who have a dog in the race, that they're gonna be held liable responsibility, responsible if things go out of hand? So, we have somebody, actually, that contacts, has, has something in the game, because this a neighbor of a block party neighborhood, as in, citizen of the city, or a landlord or a property owner.
Counsel, if we can come back to the process.
Counsel doesn't formally approve event applications, these are brought forward for matters of information, they're brought forward for resources, time, commitment of city, uh, staff, and the amount of time associated with that, if you're gonna get into a situation and you're gonna approve every single event application, a yes or no, by virtue of a resolution and a vote, that's gonna fundamentally change the process you have for event applications. So, I just wanna be clear as to what that process consists of presently versus what you're potentially looking at doing in the future.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I gave anybody the impression that we would vote approve anything.
Oh, no.
That's not what I meant, I meant, they know what we want, I think the staff should get together and kind of make suggested changes to kind of cover what we just talked about, and again, um, closing a street does need some kind of city knowledge and approval, and I think, uh, serving alcohol on a city property, we're, we're definitely involved in that, we need to know if there's insurances there, so these are the things I'm talking about, not preventing somebody from saying, hey, I'm having a barbecue at my house, and it kind of spills over to the front lawn, that's not what I'm talking about, okay, I'm just saying, someone's planning a large block party, um, there should be some courtesies for the rest of the neighborhood, and I think we can handle that in administrative policy, what, through the same process we get now, you just check off if you're okay with everything, and you know the policy, you're okay with it, we usually are okay with it, uh, but it's when there's a concern, if someone says, I'm not okay with it, because the last time they had a party there, there was a large problem, then I think at that point, we should say, we're not gonna give you permission to exceed the noise ordinance, we're not gonna give you permission to have alcohol on a city street, and we could pull back our, uh, permissions on that end of it, and that gives us a little authority to kind of slow whatever they're trying to do now, but for the most part, we've had one incident in many years, and I, I don't think we need to overreact to it, it's kind of a neighborhood issue, it's a, it's a, it's a, um, neighborhood or neighbor complaint amongst themselves, no different than if somebody had loud music in the backyard, and a neighbor called and said, hey, this music's too loud, uh, it doesn't mean we have to legislate something throughout the whole city because of one neighbor dispute, so, at this point, it's just one incident, and all the years I've been here, I've never seen a complaint like this come through, usually, they're all pretty civilized, and they happen once a year, and people are okay with it, but this was an, this was an exception, I think.
Heidi, so. I just wanted to add that I do remember this one had originally come forward, I think upon review by the department, um, we asked several questions, I think originally they wanted to close the entire street of South Swan, and we asked them to narrow it down to a, a crossroad, uh, so that it wasn't the entire street, um, so I know that there definitely were, you know, considerations for this, I know there was the issue with, um, Sacred Heart being there, and how was the alcohol going to be served, I know it was discussed at some point, I think a lot of the issue is, like, Rachel was saying, we asked them to be as specific as possible, and we can only get from them what they put on here.
Right, right, so that would mean we need to kind of tweak the event application a little bit, like a, a block party section, like if you're having a large gathering in a neighborhood, that kind of defines it as block party, I guess we could.
I don't, I don't think alcohol was commercially served at this event.
Polish Falcons.
Oh, I'm sorry, Polish Falcons.
I don't know that the Polish Falcons can allow alcohol to go out the door.
Uh, it was served on their property, according to the event application.
Okay.
So, whether it went out the door on their property, or, and I'm not an expert.
And I, I'm pretty sure, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of these, um, liquor licenses allow for off, off-premise consumption, the problem is, the minute you leave, you're on the city street, and therefore, you're in violation of our rule, but technically, if I wanted to go into Falcons, said, hey, give me a six pack of whatever beer I like, and they could technically sell it to me, as long as I'm not drinking as I walk on the street. walk on the street. I can walk to my car, drive home, and in my backyard, you know, I mean, I remember years ago, that was done before they were convenience store, they were open throughout 24/7.
I think Mr. Gray, being an expert in that.
Yeah, you know, you're off-premise, right? So they could buy six-packs and walk out of your, I know people have done it to go, right? So that's the same thing with the Falcons, they can allow them to go and walk across the street and go to their house and pop a can, and the minute they're on the sidewalk, without an event application, that's where it becomes a problem. So the event application is allowing the music, it's allowing the alcohol consumption on the street in the venue area. So that's, those are permissions we don't have to give if people haven't been cooperative in the past with their block parties. We can kind of tamp it down a little bit by saying, we're not going to allow you to get an event application, and we're not going to give you permission for all this, and we're not going to let you close the street out. Because I mean, it's a city street, that's our street. We don't have, they can't just close it off without our permission, so. As a matter of fact, we dropped the barricades up.
And we have, at times, rerouted parades because they were going to be on a DO2 route, and it was going to be extremely either expensive or inconvenient for traffic. So there is a review that is held with managers and department heads with groups that want to have events. Sean, I know Assistant Chief Camp sits in those, Josh, you do as well, I don't sit in those event reviews, but they do occur, and they do try to find a way to have the event, to hold it in the way and manner that the group would like to, but also not impeding on citizens or traffic or things of that nature. So is it a delicate balance? Yes.
Well, and let's face it, we're, they're coming in to do an event application, so they're trying to do the right thing, and they want help as to how do I do this, I want to have this party, and the event application walks them through it, talks about insurance, talks about alcohol, talks about what you need if you're going to have alcohol. So I think the event application could be adjusted slightly to cover the concerns that we have for this one incident, and if it starts to be a pattern, then we can go farther with it. I just don't want to overreact because we had one block party that caused a concern, we shouldn't block all future type events in other parts of the city. I mean, we've never had a problem before.
I agree with the attorney, though, this is all handled by the administration, it's really not a council matter, other than discussion and then maybe review your procedures.
Right, so I think you guys understand, Rachel, you understand what we're looking for here, right? So I think it can be adjusted within your policy, and it's fine by me.
So clarity, just so I have it, will ensure that applicants understand that local traffic must be able to get through, you certainly can't block one's driveway, you can't block emergency access, you're not to go on others' property who don't offer it as part of the celebration, things of that nature. And that you have to make outreach to the neighbors, whether it's knocking on doors, flyers, but something personal, so that everyone understands what is going on and how it will affect their neighborhood. The last question I had was a topic that came up, do you have to be a neighborhood resident to throw the party? That's Councilmember Richmond brought it up, I just want clarity on how the rest of council feels.
If that could just, why not, Rachel, the gentleman, if all his applications are South Swan Street residents?
Okay, so in this case, it would have, you know, the majority of times when these parties are thrown, it is a resident of that neighborhood who tries to open their yard or their home in the street.
I think that would be a question you would ask if someone says, hey, I'm so-and-so catering business out of Buffalo, and I have this traveling block party business, and I come into a neighborhood and they pay me and I throw a party. I think that would raise flags, I would hope, and say, well, no, we, that's, you know, you need a solicitor's permit or whatever, you, we're only into like the local neighborhoods throwing their own little gathering, and we're not trying to do a commercial business out here. Right? Because I think that's kind of what this kind of turned into, is a little bit bigger than we normally have. And I personally, I don't think they intended to disrupt the neighborhood, I think they were just trying to put on an event, and he just did what they thought would be fun, and it just kind of didn't turn out right. But I don't think there was any malicious intent there.
When someone comes in with, for an event application of this sort of magnitude, do you make them aware of the open container law, too?
So the, and I'll ask those who review it with applicants to respond, but on page one of the event application, it's highlighted in bold, and it says, it's the applicant's responsibility to police the area during the gathering to make sure all alcoholic beverages, control rules are followed. Also, after the event application, applicant is responsible to dispose of all empty bottles and debris. It goes on to say, if you're contracting with a group to sell alcohol during your event on city property, separate insurance is required with liquor legal in addition to your insurance. So as to when you meet with them, chief, do you discuss open container with them?
Yeah, the, depending on the type of event, obviously, our Assistant Chief goes over in detail what the requirements for the event hold are, and what the city code would apply, whether it's closing a street, rerouting traffic, or open containers. So the Assistant Chief says that, and if there's any questions, obviously, he flushes those with the event application.
Maybe to refine my question, are, the people where, they're going to have alcohol at the event, the open container law applies, and then they would have to have special permission from council. You see, that's, I mean, specific in the open container law, that the provision can be waived for which special permission has been granted by the city council, by the city council. So in other words, if you want to have a block party, but also you're going to serve alcohol, then it's a whole different ballgame.
I believe people are aware, and tonight's example is the Italian Fest coming forward asking for special permission for open container throughout the whole festival. So many times, we see if somebody wants something different than what we offer, coming through with a, with a different application.
What you're saying now is that council now has to build a resolution and approve it, which is what we just said five minutes ago, that we're not in doing. So I don't refuse.
No, if they want to have a block party, they don't need council approval. If they want to have alcohol on city property, according to our open container law, then that requires council.
Correct, and the liquor insured, legal, and that insurance all has to be in order as well.
Well, in the past, we just had them do an event application, and that was enough.
But that's what we still do.
That's, the instances in which alcohol has been permitted on city property are few and far between.
Right, but I mean, if they're having a, an event like Italian Fest, they did an event application. We didn't need to do any special resolution to allow them to have alcohol throughout the venue. You just, that's the event application, will alcohol be served? Not by us, but people will have it, so therefore they have their own licenses, but they're allowed to walk within the event area with their open containers because they stated it, then they checked the box on that event application. We haven't come in here and done a resolution allowing.
The last Italian Fest.
We what?
Many years ago, the Assistant Manager found a resolution for the Italian Fest a few years ago.
For the Wingding.
Or Wingding, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, I mean.
So the last time we've given special permission with open container to a larger area is, I think what we're trying to explain, was at Wingding. And then we found that resolution, and you'll see that coming forth for the Italian Fest to allow the streets of the event to allow open containers per how they want to bring forward the event.
So now we're back to approving an event? Is that what you were trying to avoid, or that's okay?
Very isolated instances. As a matter of course, you're not reviewing and approving by resolution events, but if there's a special request pursuant to the city code section 37, that would otherwise be inconsistent with the open container law, yes, there should be a resolution.
Because I mean, I remember seeing event applications come through and them saying, well, alcohol be served, and Bob asked a question, are, do they have insurance? And they said, yes, and that was the end of it. We didn't, I don't recall a special resolution, other than us making sure that there was insurance to cover us because they were using a city park or whatever they were using to have this event, they put an, I'm just trying to be consistent here, because some I've seen and now.
If you're talking about a pavilion, pavilion's different than some of this larger public spaces covered by the open container law.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're on the same page, it seems like we're doing two different things for different reasons.
Thank you.
Okay, so where are we at? You're going to kind of tell us the policy?
I will work with department heads and managers who review the applications with those who want to hold events, to make sure they understand that they must be cognizant of all neighbors and traffic concerns, and we'll see if that does the trick for any future block parties.
And then, if there are violation of this event application, the county police the authority to say, you're way out of scope of what you requested, we need to like, end this thing down, and it's closed down.
Sure, for the individual who, obviously, we feel terrible that they didn't participate or enjoy the festivities around their residence, if they had called the police on that evening, they would have come and assisted in any way they could have to make that resident feel comfortable what was going on, and monitor the situation, and take care of any trespass on the porch or other, other things.
If you're retaliation, and another incident happened another time, that there was retaliation, and I'm the one that contacted the police and said, please go over and check on this, and later that day, there was retaliation, so, you know, elderly people, it can be a tough thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Word for Engineering Services.
Yes, Council President, member of council, in your packet, you have a memo from Brett Frank, Director of Public Works, to Ms. Tabelski in regards to an RFQ that was submitted for engineering services throughout the city. At times, it becomes impractical for us to advertise for proposals for each and every project, so what we'd like to do is, we sent out an RFQ, which will provide a qualified shortlist of firms that the city can utilize, depending on expertise, availability, and detailed proposals. This process will give the city the flexibility to utilize the best firm for the project, while still offering the advantage of having more than one firm available and competing for the work. So you have a resolution in front of you that says, City Batavia has projects that need engineering services, including design, bid documentation preparation, and inspection, and a request for qualified qualifications was advertised, 11 firms submitted, 10-page proposals outlining their qualifications, expertise, availability. This was carefully reviewed by a group of staff members, including myself, DPW Director Frank, our Director of Water, Wastewater, as well as our Director of Finance, and 11 of these firms have been chosen, so now be it resolved that the City Council and City Batavia approves the list of engineering firms to contract with for engineering services. Aerosmith Development, Barton and Logan Juice, Urban Anthony, GHD, JM Davidson, LaBella Associates, NK Bndari, Nos Bomber and Clark, TY Lynn, VIP Architecture, and Wendell.
Any questions?
So this, this means, so these, this is your qualified list, but any engineering services will still come in front of council for the, to be awarded?
There's still a resolution for.
No, if it's in the budget, it is not, it's a professional service, doesn't need to be awarded, and that the, these folks have already, or these firms have gone through an RFP process. Sometimes you see engineering awards associated with grants that require specific approvals.
And this solvent screen, there's no capital to ventures with anybody in any of these corporations, or, you know, any collusion with other companies, or anything that you have any concerns over?
No concerns at this time.
Thank you.
So would it be approval to move this to a future business meeting?
Yes.
Could that get moved? 41 Central Avenue?
Yes, yeah, Council President Jankowski, members of council, you heard a presentation from Habitat Humanities today. We do have one house that was foreclosed on by the city that we are looking to transfer over to Batavia Housing Authority with the end goal of ending up in Habitat's hands to rehab. That house is at 41 Central Avenue, consistent with the city's strategic plan, neighborhood revitalization effort, which recommended that the city move forward with the purchase and sale contract with Batavia Housing Authority, to convey the control of that to Batavia Housing Authority. If approved, it is expected that the property be rehabilitated within 18 months after property transferred by Habitat. We have a resolution as well, that simply states, the city acquired ownership of 41 Central Avenue in 2023 through property tax foreclosure process. Habitat has expressed interest in acquiring and renovating the parcel. The way this works is that we convey it over to Batavia Housing Authority, and the transfer of property and redevelopment takes place by Habitat. So we have to go through BHA for the charter, or not the charter, I'm sorry, for our housing policy, and then they will convey it over.
I just want to thank, we have been for all the years of putting these houses back on our streets, and they were, at South Swan, I remember that house, it was really a bad one, and Oak Street, that gentleman was extremely happy to have a house, so, you know, the more we could do, I'm in full support, and we've, I've supported it since they were all, Council Avenue. I think it's a great idea, and I wish we could do more, I wish we could do more, but, you know.
I'm excited about this because really, like, Central Avenue, they need that, they need that. I'm excited.
Do you have a copy of the purchase and sale contract? Right, anyone else have any concerns? So are we in consensus to move this to a future business? Bureau of Maintenance, surplus.
Thank you, Council President. We have three vehicles that the Bureau of Maintenance would like to surplus, including a 1996 Ford.
It's just broken in.
I thought I read it wrong. A 1996 Ford dump truck, I will let Tom explain more about these vehicles, but a 2002 International Dump Truck and a 2002 Tenco Plow.
Even the 2002 are.
And Tom, do you have anything to add on these vehicles?
The 1996 Dump Truck, the back dump part has been repaired and welded several times, and it's no longer a dump truck, it's kind of a flatbed, well, it could dump one more time, and then it won't anymore. And then the 2002 International with the plow, it has several major defects that need to be repaired, that it's just not worth the money.
Just as a note, Councilmember Beely reminded me that you graduated in 1996. So when you were heading your campaign, you saw the truck drive by on Main Street.
Brand new.
So, yeah, thank you for getting all these years out of these vehicles, I mean, thank you for keeping them running all this time, but I think it's time.
And these will go to auction, just to clarify.
Anyone else? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to a future business? Surplus of phones.
So in your packet, you will see, as you recall, we switched over and marched through a new phone system so that our phones would be able to be basically serviced throughout the course of the contract, which leaves us with 70 phones that need to be declared surplus based on our purchasing policy.
Any questions about that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that, or do we, yeah, is there a resolution in there? So are we in consensus to move that to a future business? Bid for the Italian Fest?
So you have a resolution to assign certain authority to the Batavia Business Improvement District for control over event. We've talked at length about section 37-4 of the Batavia Municipal Code, that the Batavia Business Improvement District would hereby be granted special permission to allow open containers related to the Italian Fest activities on designated city streets. These would be the city streets outlined in their event application, which was reviewed earlier by city clerk Parker. So this would allow that open container to occur during this event on those streets.
For instance, a concern?
Yeah.
Are we in consensus to move that to a future business? Okay, that gets moved. Kyler Preston, Batavia Pedal Party LLC.
Yes, council, you have in front of you a resolution, and you heard a presentation this evening from Mr. Preston in regards to his new business. There's a resolution in your packet to ask permission per code 37-4 of Batavia Municipal Code, that the Batavia Party, Pedal Party LLC grants special permission to allow open containers.
containers related to their business on designated streets, sidewalks, city-owned public areas under the approved. It's actually not out of that application, but it can be if it needs to be. Going forward, they will also provide the City of Batavia with a copy of their general liability insurance, and any other insurance that's there.
I think this is a pretty neat idea, and Mr. Preston, how old are you?
Twenty-two.
That's great. That's awesome. So I want to move it to the next meeting, or...
Yeah, we can do it. Anybody else have anything to say about it?
I would just like to see, I don't have a problem moving it to the next meeting, but I'd like to see some of the things we discussed, all how it's going to handle, like the smoking and that sort of thing, so, you know, there aren't problems with that. It could just...
The only request before council has to do with a special permit application of alcohol. Anything related to cannabis or smoking, regular tobacco, is going to be covered in the laws of the state of New York, just as it would when any other business owner. So council only has one matter being considered.
Right. Right, I didn't ask for it to be put in the resolution. I said, "I'd just like to see..."
Well, it's not required to.
It's not required to, and council's not acting on it.
We're talking about the open container.
Just to, I mean, you're not approving the pedal tour. You're not approving the operation of the pedal bike. The only thing that's subject to council approval is the question of whether or not you want to give special permission under code section thirty-seven.
Right.
So I would like to move to code thirty-seven to the next business meeting.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Anybody else have a concern?
No, not at all.
Yeah, that's the only thing we're acting on, is the actual part about allowing the two cans of alcohol. So that's our only authority here. So we're in consensus to move that to a vote on the next business meeting. The bid request for open container, Jackson Square.
I would also like to make a motion to pass that open request to the next business meeting.
Can I have a discussion?
Right now, the way the law's set up, you're either going to have to give special permission for that specific location, or you're going to have to change the local law. One or the other.
I want to give special permission.
Yeah, this is what the motion is.
Right.
That's what the draft resolution is. Oh, no, we don't have a draft resolution. This is the executive session one. So this is just a request for discussion at this point. So at this point, I don't think we have a problem with it, so we should probably draw up a resolution and put it on the next conference, right? So that we can officially discuss it, and the resolution will be visible to the public, and they can weigh in, and then it'll be moved to a business meeting after that. Because technically, everything is going to, we have to see the resolution at a conference meeting first. So this has just been a letter of request to have us discuss it.
I thought we were discussing it, and then, like, possibly, we could have it then at the next meeting, and the resolution...
I don't have a resolution in front of me. I don't know what it would say, and what it would be. Usually, we have, like, a draft. I mean, I don't know if it's a Georgia, would we be violating council rules by moving that to a business meeting without giving an official draft resolution for us?
I would say better practice is to have a proposed resolution with terms and conditions. Council can see, the public can see, you take it up at a conference meeting or a special conference meeting, and determine whether or not council wants to move it to a business meeting. As opposed to doing it on the fly, all due respect.
Yeah, I mean, definitely some support for it. We heard the people speak, there's a letter here, but now we'll draft a resolution, and we'll talk about it at a conference meeting. And if we have to, if you wanted to, you could do a special conference and move it to the next business, if that's what you want. That's okay with council?
We should exercise this. I don't want to see this go on till September.
No, 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 no.
I want this going down.
We could do it at the next meeting, if we do a special conference before the business, and bring it up then. This still gives the public two weeks to let us know how they feel by the time we have the next business meeting.
Every day we delay makes that business that much more inefficient.
I agree. I think it's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
We need a space for that.
We need to move on now.
Yeah, if we can get it in a special meeting with a next business meeting, because it's, you know, summer's coming, and concerts are going to start.
So at most, it would be delayed two weeks for us to kind of put it together, and make it officially a resolution, and then we can talk about it at the special conference, the week meeting, and then we could, so the next meeting is the June 12th. So that's good, because when we go into July, we only have one meeting a month, so you're right. It would get delayed almost till September.
We have a special conference, and then we go down to the same...
Yeah. That okay with you, Rachel? Do you think that timeline's feasible for you?
Not a problem.
Okay. Anyone else have any concern on that?
No, we're here to promote business, not destroy it.
Absolutely, it would be great. Mr. Veely, would you take this into executive session?
The House President, whereas Article seven, section one oh five, one D of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss proposed pending or current litigation. Whereas Article seven, section one oh five, one H of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed condition, sale or lease of real property or proposed condition of securities or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, but any of them listed to a substantial effective value as fore. Whereas Article seven, one oh five, one F of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of City of Batavia, and upon approval of this motion, the City Council, this hereby enter into executive session.
Second to that, Mr. McGinnis. Hold the role, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?